The Regular Board meeting for the Independent School District Board of Trustees will now begin. It is six oh one. Pledge of Allegiance, please stand, will be led by Janelle Baylin, Junior at America's High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Next on the agenda will be Superintendent's comments.
Yes, President Gandara, members of the board, I'd like to begin by welcoming our new members to our elite SISD leadership team. With us tonight, we have Ms. Melissa Martinez, who is our new Assistant Principal at Sanchez Middle School. We also have with us tonight Ms. Nancy Torres, who is our new Coordinator of Advanced Academics. Congratulations, Ms. Torres and Ms. Martinez. I know you all do a great job in your new roles here in SISD. Congratulations to both of you. Also, we held our third annual Walk for Success this past Saturday, and it truly is, it's always a heartwarming experience to see how many employees, how many community members and board members come out to join us to recover some students who have not returned back to school. Uh, we had over three hundred, over three hundred participants in this important event. You know, like I said, you know, for some reason or another, some students don't come back, but here in our school district, we don't give up on our students. So it was a great Saturday morning. Uh, we already have several students that are coming back to finish their education and graduate and continue to a beautiful, bright life. So I want to thank all SISD, I do want to thank Hilda, Miranda, Tammy McGavin, and also Mr. Corey Craft, who are back there. Mr. Craft, please stand up. Where's Tammy? If Tammy's here also, and Hilda, great job for putting everything together. Also, as a reminder, we will have our SISD Foundation Golf Tournament on Friday, October 7th, which is a great event aimed at collecting funds to provide Socorro ISD graduates with scholarships for, for college. So thank you, everyone, who supports this great, great cause. And that concludes my comments. President Gandara.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is, and four board honors, Daniel Escobar.
Good evening, President Gandara, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. With our first recognition, we will honor an America's High School student whose outstanding science project earned third place at the Stockholm Junior Water Prize Competition after being nominated by the Water Environment Association of Texas. The student's winning science project examines a way to reduce global warming by generating electricity using rainwater. Congratulations to Janelle Baylin. Janelle, if we can have you, please take a photo with the board and superintendent. Congratulations once again. With our next recognition, we will recognize a parent volunteer from a Nexo Serna School for earning the 2016 Heroes for Children Award from the Texas Board of Education. This individual is one of only fifteen volunteers in Texas to receive the prestigious honor for her contribution of time and effort to support public school students. She was presented a certificate and resolution by the State Board of Education during a special ceremony in Austin, which was held recently. Congratulations to the 2016 Heroes for Children Award recipient, Yamil Gonzalez. Congratulations once again. Next, we will recognize two Montwood Middle School administrators who were named the Region Nineteen Middle School Principal of the Year and Middle School Assistant Principal of the Year by the Region Nineteen Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, or TASP. The two Team SISD administrators were nominated by their peers and a selection committee for their exemplary performance and outstanding leadership in secondary education. Congratulations to the TASP Region Nineteen Middle School Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Renee King. And TASP Region Nineteen Middle School Principal of the Year, Sylvia Espadasa. Just look straight ahead. Congratulations once again to you both. Our final recognition this evening will honor the Team SISD Bond Accountability Committee members for their service in overseeing the completion of all Bond 2011 projects. The BAC worked diligently as a team and always kept focus on equitable education and facilities for all students in Team SISD. Thanks to their support, all Bond 2011 projects were finished one year ahead of schedule and well within budget. Bond 2011 has given Team SISD students state-of-the-art facilities, including three new elementary schools, a new middle school, science labs, the completion of two high schools, and improvements throughout the district. The hard work and fidelity of all members involved in the Bond 2011 implementation, including the BAC, resulted in some thirty-seven million dollars in project savings. With their partnership, Team SISD remain true to its commitment of promises made, promises kept. Recognizing the Bond Accountability Committee members who were able to join us this evening, beginning with Kerry Milden, Carlos Torres, Dora Oaxaca, Letizia Hernandez, and the committee was led by Chair, Mr. Robert Alvarez. Congratulations once again, and thank you for all of your service. That concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item number six, Board of Trustees' Business. Consider approval to fill the current vacancy of the SISD Foundation Bond of Directors. Mr. Hambrich.
Thank you, Mr. Gandara, distinguished members of the board, Dr. Espinoza, and this great team that leads this wonderful school district. Tonight, I come before you to recommend the name of Mr. Paul Garcia to replace one of our leaving board members, another Garcia, who just happened to bring the new one in. It's kind of, it's kind of an unusual thing. But tonight, I'd like to recommend that we accept Mr. Paul Garcia, an employee of the El Paso Electric Company, a person I've known for almost thirty years. Uh, he's already active in our group and has helped us immensely already with the golf tournament and other items. And we would appreciate a vote to bring him aboard our foundation. That's all I have to say.
A motion has been made by, not gonna second by, Mr. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to item B, Consider Approval of National School Lunch Week Proclamation. Ms. Shinaskey.
Good evening. Socorro ISD Child Nutrition Services proudly participates in the National School Lunch Program. Each year, the nation celebrates National School Lunch Week throughout participating districts. President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, it is my honor to read the proclamation as follows. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for over sixty years through advanced practices and nutrition education, and whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and whereas the National School Lunch Program has been joined through the years by many other excellent child feeding programs, and there is evidence of continued need for nutrition, education, and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs, whereas the Child Nutrition Services Department encourage all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hope of achieving a more healthful synergy for today and the future. Administration recommends approval to proclaim October seventeenth through the twenty-first, first, twenty sixteen as National School Lunch Week here in Socorro.
Motion has been made by Ms. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Shinaskey. Item C, Consider Approval of Texas Education Human Resource Day Resolution. Mr. Campoya.
Good evening, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My name is Rudy Campoya, Chief Human Resources Officer for the Socorro Independent School District, and I am here tonight, as in previous school years, to request your approval for the, um, resolution and proclamation as designated by Governor Abbott. Um, he designated October as being the, uh, Human Resources Month and October twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, being the Texas Education Human Resources Day. The proclamation is in recognition of the vital role that HR professionals play in the school district implementing effective practices for hiring highly qualified and effective staff, as it is one of our strategic directions, number three. Uh, today, I do have a student of ours that is from John Drogen School that will be reading the resolution for you. Her name is Jacqueline Campoya.
Good evening. Um, Socorro Independent School District Texas Human Resources Day Resolution. Whereas the Human Resources Division is instrumental in recruiting, selecting resources, and retaining quality staff in support of providing an excellent education for all students. And whereas the Human Resources plays a key role of fostering satisfaction and loyalty among employees by allowing for professional growth and development and compensation and benefits. And whereas hu- Human Resources monitors and manages current and future workforce trends, organizational culture, legal and legislative trends, and ethical and social responsibilities. And whereas Human Resources, hu- Whereas Human Resources is an important part of district leadership and vital to overall productivity and efficiency of the schools, school districts workforce. And whereas Human Resources is a valued and respected department that sustains the district's most important asset, its people. Therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Socorro Independent School District does hereby resolve that October twelfth, twenty sixteen will be observed as Texas Education Human Resources Day throughout the district. The board also encourages students, staff, and parents to express their appreciation to Human Resources team members for their dedication and commitment to Socorro ISD employees and students.
And at this time, administration recommends approval and support for the proclamation and resolution as presented.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayu, seconded by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
Let's go down to item number seven, Open Forum. Nobody has signed up for Open Forum. Let's go to item A, District Report, Annual Investment Report for Financial Year Two Thousand and Fifteen Sixteen. Mr. Ressa.
Yes, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, as required by Board Policy CDA Local. I'm here tonight to present to you the Year and Investment Report for the Two Thousand and Fifteen Fiscal Year. Uh, this presentation I'm going to present to you has been updated, and it's different from what you have in your board book. I just want to note that for the record. My report will focus on three areas, investment yields, earnings, and balances. And in my report, I will be referring to what's called basis points. And basis points for reference purposes, one hundred basis points represents one percent. So on the screen, what you have before you is the average monthly yields for the Two Thousand and Sixteen Fiscal Year. With respect to investment yields, you'll see that rates certainly did increase this year, ranging from six to thirteen basis points in the investment pools to start off the year. One basis point for the Wells Fargo Repo account and fifteen basis points for the BBVA Money Market Account. These rates, these rates increased in the investment pools for the second quarter to between seventeen and twenty-three basis points. In the third quarter, they further increased. Uh, third quarter is the period from January through March of two thousand and sixteen. Uh, the increases range from thirty-three to fifty-two basis points. And in the final quarter, the investment pools saw slight increases, depending on the pool, of about three to four basis points. Now, during this quarter, the district entered into a sixty to ninety day maturity investments to lock in higher yields. Um, these investments are expected to earn sixty-six basis points for that fourth quarter. So, uh, interest rates are expected to continue to increase. Uh, but given this fact, the administration is looking at the BBVA Money Market Account to see if maybe we should perhaps redirect, uh, funds from, uh, that investment to another investment vehicle. With respect to interest earnings, as you can see on this slide, for text pool and first public investment pools, there's general increases from last year in the food service, general fund, and interest and sinking fund accounts, while there's some negative, uh, numbers in the bond and construction accounts. This is because the principal construction balances in those respective, uh, categories decreased while the investment yields did increase from the prior year. Here, you see the interest earnings for the Logic, Texas Term, and BBVA Compass Investments. The district did realize approximately three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in interest earnings from all funds. This is an increase of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars from the prior year. Again, this is increase is primarily due to increased yields, uh, and these yields are expected to increase in the next fiscal year. So what you have now here are the investment balances in the activity, uh, for, uh, for the, the district. Now, I do want to mention that in your, in your budget booklet, we do have the, uh, activity for the last quarter of the fiscal year, and those are listed in pages twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, respectively, of your budget book. So what you see is that principal balances started at two hundred and thirty-six million dollars at the beginning of the year and decreased in the first quarter to a hundred and sixty-six million dollars. This is primarily due to the fact that we had to draw down our investment balances because we don't receive any state funding in the month of August. And then we have that first, uh, we have that payroll period in, in, that we have to meet for September. So we had to draw down investment balances to meet our operational cash flow needs. Now, this amount increased to a hundred and ninety-five million dollars in the second quarter due to the tax collections that we received in the, in the month of December. And they further increased to another two hundred and forty-one million dollars. I shouldn't say another, but two, two hundred and forty-one million dollars, again, because of the tax collections in the spring months that we collect. So the investment then went down to two hundred and two million dollars, uh, by about thirty-nine million dollars from the last quarter, ending at two hundred and two million. So, uh, that's very, uh, similar to prior years with respect to investment balances and the increases and decreases. So in conclusion, I wanted to make, uh, this pretty short and sweet, is that the administration will continue to utilize investment pools, money markets, and the Wells Fargo Repo account for investment purposes, as well as to utilize longer maturities for funds that don't require immediate cash flow needs. Okay? And we will endeavor to increase yields and minimize investment risk wherever possible. This is my investment report for the last fiscal year. Um, are there any questions with this investment report?
Any questions?
Mr. Gandara?
Mr. Ressa?
Yes, sir.
We spoke earlier at the Finance Committee, and actually, it's really nice to see these numbers going up on investment that we're getting a little bit better return on our investment because it's been such a long time with, with a dry year. And so your team, um, has actually done an excellent job trying to keep aware of these investments to try to get us a little bit of funding there. Uh, I do have a question on this slide. We start with a beginning balance of two hundred and thirty-six, and then we end quarter two oh two. Uh, what do you anticipate our beginning balance for twenty seventeen is going to be?
So usually, it'll go back up because of the fact that we start getting our, our, you know, our, our tax, not our tax collection, but certainly our state funding formula that comes in.
Okay.
Uh, for, in, in September. So usually, it'll go up to about maybe two hundred and fifty million dollars and so forth.
So we'll go back to something around, close to the beginning balance again, before we take on the new year?
Yes, sir.
I see.
And then usually, that's where it goes.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Ressa.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Let's go down to item B, Bond Accountability Committee Update. Mr. Alvarez.
Good evening, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. First of all, thank you for the positive recognition. That was really nice. By behalf of my committee and myself, we really thank you for that. And on behalf of the, uh, Two Thousand and Eleven Bond Accountability Committee, I'm pleased, I'm pleased to present you with our fifth and final update on the activities of the committee, the progress of the bond, Two Thousand and Eleven. First and foremost, though, I'd like to be proud to tell you that the report for the bond, Two Thousand and Eleven, has been complete, as advertised, promises made, promises kept. The activities of the Bond Accountability Committee have been in line with the chart, with the charge set forth by the Board of Trustees in our organizing charter, which was established in the fall of Two Thousand and Eleven. A diverse group of members representing parents, employees, volunteers, businesses, and taxpayers as a whole have served in the committee over the five, past five years. As a committee, we met eighteen times to receive updates from staff on all aspects surrounding contracts, design, constructions of all projects. From the formation of the committee to date, we have been informed on the district's goals for Bond Two Thousand and Eleven, project management procedures, including the district's process for selecting of professional services and contracts, project design, and cost implementation, as well as status updates. All information provided to the group has been clear, concise, and complete. Staff prepared presentations that were always professional and informative, and all the questions were addressed. We all had the opportunity to tour projects and have been thoroughly impressed and proud of the facilities and resources provided through Bond Two Thousand and Eleven. Promoting open, transparent communication, each meeting of the committee has been documented by staff and summaries posted along with reports on the district's website. Staff has also maintained a regular, positive, and informative outreach effort promoting communication and accountability surrounding all elements within Bond Two Thousand and Eleven. Moreover, the hard work and fidelity of all involved with the implementation of Bond Two Thousand and Eleven has resulted in some thirty-seven million dollars in project savings. We are proud to have fulfilled all the promises made to the community and stretched tax dollars payers, which has allowed us for additional work to be completed without burning any taxpayers. As a committee, we supported the use of some of the sixteen, of some of sixteen point four million dollars to upgrade the air conditioning at Socorro, Sanchez, Slider, and Clark Middle Schools. We also reviewed demographic information and discussed possible uses for the remaining savings. The committee recommends that the board follow the original Facilities Advisory Committee proposal and build a third new elementary school to serve the rapidly growing Pebble Hills community. Completing the new school, along with the completion of all the middle school HVAC projects, will ensure that we remain true to our commitment, promises made, promises kept. With the completion of the final Bond Two Thousand and Eleven projects, our work as a Two Thousand and Eleven Bond Accountability Committee has come to a successful end. Thank you to the board for entrusting us to represent our community and overseeing every aspect of Bond Two Thousand and Eleven. We are proud to have served and been part of such an impactful initiative. I would like to thank the staff who helped me facilitate the activities of the Bond Two Thousand and Eleven Accountability Committee and commend the work of the facilities and planning team for their great work and responsible management of all bond funds. Together, Team ISD planned, monitored, and completed all promises made to the community in-house, which is a testament to the great team effort and steadfast focus of the district staff to be equal with all students. It has been an honor to serve Team ISD and deliver Bond Two Thousand and Eleven with promises made, promises kept. Thank you.
Would anyone like to say anything?
Yes, uh, yes, uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Alvarez and all of the Bond Accountability Committee. I know there's, uh, some of them with us here tonight. Uh, but without their support and their guidance, we would not have been able to achieve together the successful implementation of the Bond Two Thousand and Eleven. I also want to thank, obviously, obviously, Mr. Aynton and his team as well for working with, uh, the, the Bond Accountability Committee. Uh, our students are in the right settings that they need to be successful, obviously, because of what the work of, uh, Mr. Aynton's team and the Bond Accountability. Thank you, Mr. Alvarez.
Thank you, sir.
Just following what, what Dr. Espinoza said, uh, Mr. Alvarez, I'd like to thank you and your team, the Bond Accountability, the Bond Accountability Committee for the past five years. You guys done an exceptional job. You guys were, were being committed, and you guys made the promises made, promises kept. Same team, same thing, and with Tom and his team. The district passed his bond, the, the city passed his bond, the district passed his bond, and, and we all followed up on the bond, and we made sure that we made the promises made and promises kept. So thank you. Great job.
Mr. Gandara? Uh, Mr. Alvarez, again, certainly, I don't want to continue to echo the sentiments of everybody, but, um, thanks and appreciation for all the work you and your committee did cannot be overstated. Also, the work, uh, for Mr. Aynton's area. Uh, I think people need to realize that you and your committee, uh, many of you served as we went out for election for a bond. Uh, so you started prior to that, then you've served on the bond. Um, it's been well over five years. I don't think people would run for election for a position of that nature, yet you all have hung with us and, and looked at every aspect of that to, to help this district be successful. The kids are the winners, but currently, we wouldn't have done a good job without the commitment of community members like yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's a collaboration between all of us. Uh, you're right, Mr. Aynton's efforts, and you all being so very supportive. Uh, at the end of the day, you're right, it's about the children, and this is why I involve my time. Uh, and when we look at it and we see what it does, and, and you see the children's face when they see these facilities, it's paid back a million over, you know? Uh, my encouragement to the parents in the building would be to please go to these facilities and see what these kids have available to them. and see what these kids have available to them. I think, uh, you know, at Socorro ISD, ISD, we have a lot to offer, and it's a tribute to you all, thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So quick again, Mr. Alvarez, thank you so much, Mrs. Wahaka for putting such in ti- putting all your time and effort into this, uh, everybody on the board, again, thank you so much. Uh, let's go to item D, Grant Report, no, C, I'm sorry, C to Mr. Aynton, Financial Report, I mean, Facilities Report, sorry.
Good evening, President Gander, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Uh, before I start my, uh, presentation, I do want to, uh, thank the Bond Accountability Committee and their work, uh, they were, they met with us for, as you heard, over the last five years, and I think, uh, uh, we couldn't have done our job without their oversight and, and helping us do that, along with my team members, it's, it's not one individual, it's Team S I, S I S D, and that goes for the board too, uh, but I, I wanted to give them that accolade, thank you. My report begins on page twenty-nine, and, let me see if I got this. We, we have the three mechanical schools, uh, Sanchez, Socorro, and, uh, Slider on here, uh, as you are aware, that these are the three middle schools, three of the four middle schools that the, uh, additional bond savings, some of the bond savings were used to, uh, do these projects. Uh, Clark has been completed, uh, all three of these middle schools are, are functioning, and we are just in the, uh, closeout stages where we're pulling all the documents together. Uh, I won't bore you with any pictures of the roofs or anything like that, but that's, that's the remaining, uh, here, uh, hopefully in October, possibly November, we'll come back with where we stand, uh, with the final cost on these three, three schools. The lightens, bleachers, the football lighting and the bleachers upgrades, uh, these, uh, projects are, uh, we've actually gotten all of our certifications, so we can use those facility, they are being used, the bleachers and the lights, we are also working with closing out this project, and it should be closed out here, uh, very shortly, uh, but all three schools are utilizing the facilities and the bleachers. The transportation facility improvements, the access road, uh, you can drive down Rojas and see that it's been paved, with the exception of the connection to Rojas, that's the remaining piece, uh, but we're also working on, uh, the, uh, correcting of the, some of the existing slabs and stuff on the future phase, and, and this project should be, uh, completed, uh, in the next few months, if not sooner, it has till December to can be completed, but I foresee completing that project ahead of schedule. The Aquatic Center, the board approved last month, uh, for us to enter into a, uh, contract with Jordan Foster. We had a meeting, uh, when was it, Friday, or maybe it was today's Monday, yeah, it was Friday, and, uh, we reviewed, uh, their, uh, information, and through some cost analysis, uh, we are able to possibly upgrade some of the, uh, controls that have to do with that one little, uh, slide area, and the controls to the, uh, uh, the main, uh, pools and the blower, uh, the little, uh, added feature that y'all added, I think we're gonna be able to upgrade that a little bit more, so, uh, through some, through some cost analysis and, and looking at some things that we don't need, uh, we'll be able to enhance that project a little bit. I will bring in that, be bringing that to the Facility Committee meeting. It's hot, are you hot?
Yeah, it's hot in here.
Okay.
Did you slow it down?
Miss Brago just adjusted it.
We'll, we'll get that working. And I think that completes the construction port, uh, facility report, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Aynton? Wow, thank you, Mr. Aynton.
Thank you.
Let's go down to Grant Report, Mr. Nell.
Good evening, President Gander, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. Our September Grant Report this month, uh, for our con- continuing grant highlights, uh, we've got our new year started, we, uh, for our Project Smart, we're preparing, uh, for a, uh, professional development for Lego Robotics for the Robocom that's coming up, and we just finished for the Project Speed Grant, we just finished bringing in a presenter last week, uh, Joe Mascoro, who was very well received by our campuses, and in fact, is, she was here this last time for teachers and counselors, this next time she's gonna come back in March for our paraprofessionals, uh, she was very well received. Our Army Youth Program in your neighborhood did end up getting funded, we just had our first, um, quarterly, uh, web, webinar conference, and, um, the new requirements for that got spelled out, so we are now getting our after-school programs all set up at our eight schools for that. We did get thrown a very convenient loop, they, um, the Army said that they want us to start a student ambassadors program for all of our mi- military connected s- schools that we're doing with APN. Well, it just so happens, we just got this new grant that just started this month, the Creating PCS, um, Positive Change at Socorro, and we had written for five of the schools that, uh, student ambassadors program, so that's gonna work out perfectly for us, we were already planning on doing it, it's gonna speed it up in our timeline a little bit, but we will be doing it. Next month, we have a post-award meeting, um, in Virginia for the PCS grant as well. On our grants awaiting notification, we're still waiting on Kellogg, um, and the, the next two grants actually got postponed as far as their awarding of, of money, um, in the cycle, they, that they ended up being resubmitted. Our applications in progress, uh, both impact aides are full underway, uh, September thirtieth is the due date for our amendment, and we've gotten about four hundred more applications, or it's the census form that we have to get back, those signed census forms and that information back, so we've been struggling to convince parents to send those in, and, uh, so that will help increase the, the money that we get. And then we just last week got out this year's, um, census forms for the sixteen-seventeen year. And grants under review, um, I was at Fort Bliss at a prep meeting the other, um, few weeks ago, and they, the spouses were there, and they were announcing that they are also gonna fund grants, um, our military grants won't fund food, so it's hard to bring in those evenings, you know, to, to bring in parents and things, and, uh, one of the, in fact, the commander's wife, um, jumped up, will we fund food? And I said, okay, you'll be seeing a grant from us, so we're gonna, we're gonna submit a grant to get some food for those military nights, you know, so that we can, we can have things to eat. And then we also have a lot of school grants out there, um, individual schools that can apply for this Texas Action for Healthy Kids, that's continually coming out, so that they can apply, the schools if they want to can apply for those grants, um, those are small school-based grants. And then finally, we're looking at this TEA Next Generation of Early College High Schools, this is one for, uh, specific for the high-demand occupation, so if that could possibly fit for our next planned early college high school, we're gonna look and see if that's a fit. Okay? And I believe that's all I have, are there any questions?
Any questions? Last one. Thank you, Mr. Aynton. Technology update, Mr. Raina.
Good evening, President Gander, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, I didn't hear anything. Uh, let's start with our update, um. I got it. Uh, we did, uh, a quick, uh, update on the radio update, uh, what we did back in twenty-fifteen, uh, we requested a bid to go out for bid for the radios, we had analog radios, and so far during the phase one that we did, we went out for the purchase of digital radios. As you can see that the first phase that we did, we, our first target was the officers. You, you can tell there that we target the, uh, the, the officers' cars, the supervisors, and the, uh, the portable units for the officers, we spent a total of a, a hundred, three hundred and sixty, three hundred and forty thousand dollars, we purchased close to a hundred and fifty-three radios. The second phase was we need to make sure that we communicated with the outside entities, like nine-one-one and the Sheriff Department and Police Department, so we built the console at the police services, we spent a hundred and forty thousand dollars there, and it is completed. We did have twenty thousand dollars left over, and we used the funds to purchase radios for cabinet, they are ordered, they are here, they're out, they are tagged also, but we're still waiting for the licenses from the FCC so we can issue them out. Uh, the third phase that you gave us is the radios for the operations and also for the Transportation, uh, Department. All the radios have been ordered, again, we're still only waiting on the licenses from the FCC to make sure that we can issue those radios out. Again, they're all digital radios, uh, we did put amplifiers at some of the campus to make sure that our signal was strong, and so far, it's been working great. Real quick on the camera update, uh, back when we started back in twenty thirteen, uh, a lot of our campuses did not have cameras, uh, the goal was to get at least five, uh, ten campuses, the ele- ten cameras at the elementaries and twenty at the high schools. Uh, we started that, and you gave us, uh, we spent six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars from bonds that the board gave us, and also from the antenna fund, the antenna fund that we had. Uh, we did place ten cameras again at the elementaries, twenty at the high schools, uh, we started in October twenty thirteen, and we spent, uh, we purchased a total of three hundred and two cameras for that year. The second phase, you gave us an additional five hundred thousand dollars, and we used those funds to put five additional cameras at each campus, it was started and completed, uh, it was started back in April, and we completed it in June of twenty sixteen, and it gave us a total of two hundred and forty cameras there. The third phase is what you, the latest phase that you've given us, our goal is, again, is to make sure that we install five additional cameras, we are targeting the inside, but if the principal desires to put them outside, it will be their decision along with the Police Department to place them there. As of June thirty, we have nine hundred and forty-six, uh, physical cameras at the district, there's two hundred, two thousand five hundred views, which means that some of the cameras have more than one view, and you can look at twenty-five different locat- twenty-five hundred different locations, uh, and again, the phase three will be finished by twenty seventeen of June, and we'll have a total of eleven hundred cameras, district-wide. Any, any questions?
Any questions? Are you sure? Anybody?
Thank you.
Lucky, you're lucky.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you so much. Let's go down to item number nine, Consent Agenda, is there any items to be pulled? F six. That's the only one, right, F six? Any other items?
Motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of item F six.
Motion has been made. A motion to approve, Mrs. Nagara, signed by Mr. Higuera. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item number six.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made, Mr. Rodriguez, signed by Mrs. Nagara. Any further discussion?
I'm gonna, I didn't make a motion, I'm gonna abstain. Did we do a vote?
Not yet.
Not yet.
No, we'll.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I abstain, I work at the college.
Okay. Let's go to New Business, number ten, ten A. Consider approval of delivery method for the new elementary school, Mr. Tom Aynton. And he's not here.
Mr. Gander, I make my motions, we move item ten A, uh, to after ten.
Okay, let's go down to, do we need a motion for that or no?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're just gonna bump him up, okay, so, second? Oh, yeah. Okay, let's go to item E, do we have a motion to go to item E? Do you have a motion made to go to item E by Mr. Ayub, signed by Mrs. Nagara, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item E, consider approval, uh, Tasby Update, five oh one, and Local Policy, huh? One oh five, I'm sorry, and Local Policy. Ms. Masias?
Yes, President Gander, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, and I'll read, oh, he's back, so I could go quick. Administrative rec- administration recommends an approv- or, and approval revisions to the following policies for Tasby Update one oh five, policy BJCF, CLE, CPC, DBA, DFBB, DFFA, DFFB, and Local Policy DC as presented.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayub, signed by Mrs. Nagara, any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying, let's go back all the way up to item ten A, Consider Approval of Delivery Method for the New Elementary School, Mr. Aynton.
Yes, President Gander, members of the board, on page two forty-one in your booklet, um, this delivery methods for the new elementary school pending your approval, a couple of items, uh, down from this particular item. Uh, back in, uh, when we passed the bond in May of two thousand and eleven, one of the requirements is to establish a delivery method, uh, for the new bond program, and, and on May of two thousand, uh, May twentieth of two thousand and eleven, the, the board approved Construction Manager at Risk and Competitive Seal Proposal for the two delivery methods, uh, for the two thousand and eleven bond, uh, program, with the majority of the work under the two thousand and eleven being CM at Risk or Construction Manager at Risk. Should the, uh, board select the, uh, CM at Risk, uh, delivery method, uh, we would have to come and put out a request for proposal and bring back to you in a month or so, uh, uh, recommendations, uh, a minimum of three, which we follow the, uh, procedure for Select and Professional Services and Construction Manager at Risk that was adopted by the board back in March of two thousand and four. Uh, the Competitive Seal Proposal, we used on, uh, one particular project in the two thousand and eleven bond program, and that was the science lab additions at the three school. Administration is, uh, recommending that we continue with Construction Manager at Risk as the delivery, uh, method. I'll answer any question.
Any questions? Need a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nagara, signed by Mr. Alvarez. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, let's go to item ten B, Consider Approval of Final Contract Sum for Pebble Hills High School, Mr. Aynton.
Yes, sir, on page two forty-two, uh, administration is recommend- recommends that the board accept the work at Pebble Hills High School and approve the final contract sum and payment as presented. Per the policy CV Local, uh, Facility Construction, the district shall make, uh, shall not make the final payment for the construction or this, or the supervision of construction until the work has been completed and the board has accepted the work. Uh, we're at that point, uh, we have, uh, gotten to the end of the contract, we do have some, uh, money set aside to do some work that we are questioning, and that's that fifty-something thousand that is remaining to, uh, do some work that we're hopefully to accomplish during the, uh, intercession. Uh, so Facility and Planning Department has completed our due diligence on Pebble Hills High School and present the following contract sum, Deductive Change Order, and the final contract sum and final payment for board acceptance. The original construction contract sum, this is just the brick and mortar cost, was fifty-nine million, three hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two. Dr. Espinoza has already signed a Deductive Change Order in the amount of two, two million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-five cents, bringing the final contract sum to fifty-six million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents, with the final payment being fifty thousand and fourteen cents. Administration recommends approval.
Any questions for Aynton? Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayu, signed by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to item ten C. Consider approval of fluid system incorporated to design HVAC upgrades at Socorro High School, Administration and Media Center. Mr. Ayington?
Yes, uh, this, this past school year, we completed some HVAC, uh, heating and ventilation improvements at Score High School. If you recall, on the thirty-one hundred and the thirty-two hundred classroom wings, I think we did a total of twenty-six classrooms. Uh, the area, there is a, quite a bit of area still under, uh, ref, uh, evaporator, evaporated cooling at Socorro High School. Uh, we are recommending that we hire fluid system to work on the administration area, the library area, and the corridors around those area. Uh, I met with, uh, fluid system and, uh, their initial fee for doing the work was a little, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars. I got them to negotiate it down. And by hiring, uh, fluid system who has knowledge of Socorro High School, uh, we will be able to design not only, uh, those three areas, but we'll be able to look at, uh, maybe phasing it and determine what the actual construction cost is. Right now, we're estimating about one point four, one point five million dollars to do those three areas. So Administration recommends a proven fluid system to design the HVAC upgrades at Score High School and Administration and Media Center for the amount of ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Rodriguez, signed by Mrs. Nagara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Abstain.
And we have one abstention. Okay, let's go to item number, item D. Consider approval authorization to solicit for professional service requests or qualifications RFQ for new elementary school, Mr. Ayington.
Yes, uh, as you heard, the Bond Accountability Committee report and our board workshop that we held a couple of, a few weeks ago, uh, with the, uh, additions of the, uh, middle school, uh, HVAC project, we still have a savings of, uh, to date around twenty point six million dollars. I think that will grow a little bit more once we close out, uh, a couple of projects. Uh, Administration is recommended that, uh, you give us authorization to solicit for professional service, services. That's the architects, uh, for the new elementary school to accommodate current enrollment and future growth as presented, uh, in, uh, Ms. Macias's presentations. Facility of planning is also recommended that, when we go through this process, that, uh, if the board approves, that this new elementary school will be a prototypical, oh, elementary school designed based on, uh, Purple Heart, because that's our newest school collaborative, uh, instruction. Uh, we had El Paso, El Paso, uh, ISD come out and visit it last, uh, Thursday and walked through it, and they were very impressed with the collaborative, uh, teaching. So we, uh, we would recommend that if the board approves, that we would, uh, look at a prototypical design based on, uh, Purple Heart. It might not exactly look at it, look like Purple Heart, but it would be a more, uh, collaborative in twenty cent, twenty-first century designing. The new elementary, uh, school will be designed for eight hundred students, approximately a hundred thousand square feet. Uh, Purple Heart was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, uh, but it has a larger kitchen because it was going to be expanded, so we can reduce the size to that. And it will, um, include the administration offices, classroom, kitchen, cafeteria, multipurpose room, restaurant, media center, site amenity and related facilities, uh, on the site determined by the facility assessment, land analysis, and demographic, uh, study. And of course, uh, this is from the bond savings that, like, like I stated earlier, that we have roughly about twenty point six. I think that'll grow over twenty-one million dollars, uh, to, uh, pay for some of this facility. And then there'll, there'll be some, um, Mr. Ress's money to carry us over the, for the rest of it. I'm anticipating that, uh, you know, it'll be somewhere around twenty-five to twenty-eight million dollars as, uh, you know, once we get into it and stuff. So Administration, uh, recommends that, uh, uh, we proceed or you approve the authorization. We will follow the, uh, procedures that we have in place and bring back to the board at least three, uh, firms, uh, for your approval, uh, hopefully in October.
Any questions?
Mr. Gondra.
Mr. Ayu?
So just to clarify, um, obviously, I understand the, the prototype design. A- as far as the site, you quoted, um, the land study and then the work that, um, Ms. Macias is doing. So if you bring back recommendation, uh, for the architects, um, at a future board meeting, at what point do we identify the site? Because they would need to know the site at some point. Will it be identified at that point or shortly thereafter? Because, uh, you know, we, we've had a lot of discussion over making sure that the next elementary school covers enough real estate area so down the road, we're not closing schools.
Yes, we would, we would need to start, uh, a process, uh, for acquiring a site. And, uh, that would be, you know, per the Board of Directive. Uh, I think hiring an architect, since we are doing a prototypical design, uh, architects can design, uh, on a flat piece of property, so to speak, and, and get the circulations and, and the major units, uh, uh, put in the design. We won't be that far along. Uh, should we, uh, focus in on a site? I think, uh, preliminary surveys, uh, uh, ORNs can be, uh, readily available. And then we can, you know, finalize the design as we go on, as far as the circulation and stuff. Uh, I don't think it should hinder us any, but we, we can't wait six months from now to determine on the site. But we need to start working on it relatively quick.
And then once we have this design, the intent would be that if we choose to, uh, we would use this school design as a site adapt down the road if we wanted to continue to use it. Is that correct?
That is a, uh, yes, yes, sir. And, and with, with some, uh, provisions and maybe the initial RFQ that we're going to put out, uh, that that would be done and, and with reductions of fee if it's used in the future.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nagara, signed by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go down to item number eleven, Executive Session. This meeting is to be closed for discussion and legal, with legal counsel regarding the status of the, the proposal termination of proba-
Probationary.
Probationary contract of RH. Okay, contract of RH from Paso del Norte School for Good Cause. To discuss personal and, personal and real estate matters and to consider administrative recommendations for principal at, uh, Mission Ridge Elementary School, Assistant Principal at Mission Early College High School, Paso del Norte School, Purple Heart Elementary School, Socorro Middle School, and, uh, special education, education, uh, physical therapist under Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero-seven-one and five, um, five-five-one point zero-seven-two and five-five-one point zero-seven-four. The time is seven oh one. Which one did you say to delete? A and B or? Just delete those two, right?
Thank you for the dessert. It was very good. Yes, sir, we did.
Oh, yes.
Yes, sir.
Just put the ice cream on, but it's still good. It was very good.
Hey, you guys need to start thanking me, all right? Who loves you? All right. Bring this meeting back out of Executive Session. It is seven forty-five. Uh, we are deleting item A and B. Going to item C, uh, Consider Approval of Administrative Recommendations, uh, item one, Principal, Mission Ridge Elementary School.
Yes, President Gondra and members of the board, at this time, Administration recommends Mr. Jesus Mendez to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the principal of Mission Ridge Elementary.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayu, signed by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, Assistant Principal, Mission Early College High School.
Yes, President Gondra, members of the board, at this time, Administration recommends Ms. Leslie Goldman to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as Assistant Principal at Mission Early College High School.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nagara, signed by Mr. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two B, Paso del Norte School.
Yes, President Gondra, members of the board, at this time, Administration recommends Ms. Hazel Valverde to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as Assistant Principal at Paso del Norte.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Rodriguez, signed by Mr. Ayu. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Purple Heart Elementary School.
Yes, President Gondra, members of the board, at this time, Administration recommends Ms. Claudia Ruiz to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the Assistant Principal at Purple Heart Elementary.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nagara, signed by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Socorro Middle School.
Yes, President Gondra, members of the board, at this time, Administration recommends Ms. Irma Ojeda to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as Assistant Principal of Socorro Middle School.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Rodriguez, again by Mrs. Nagara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, Special Education Physical Therapist.
Yes, President Gondra, members of the board, at this time, Administration recommends Ms. Lucia Esparza to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as physical therapist.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Rodriguez, signed by Mr. Ayu. Alls in fa, uh, any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is now adjourned at seven forty-eight.